All right, well, I'll have to figure that out at some point.
I think you got it.
Okay. It's just recording to the cloud. Either way, okay, here we go. Welcome to June 15th Planning Board Meeting for the City of Livingston. It is six, it is five thirty-two for the record. I'm going to pull up our agenda this morning, this afternoon. So really before we get started, I just want to say a couple of things, you guys. I just want to recognize the city staff and I know that Shannon, I think you might be only the city staff on at this point. Because Faith stepped off, but I just want to tell you how much I I'm sorry for the loss of Mike Cardos. I know that was a big blow to the city. I know he was well respected by city staff and absolutely loved by his community and family. I was able to attend his service last Friday, so I just wanted to send my condolences to the city. A huge blow, so I wanted to make sure I said that. And then I also just wanted to say, thank you for all your hard work. This past two days, maybe we're going on three now, because I know you guys have been playing some insane hours. And some insane stunts trying to keep us safe in the City of Livingston and throughout the county as well, but just know that your efforts are super appreciated and and just thank you very much. So I just wanted to make sure I get those two things in first. And then we can move on to roll call. Misha.
Yeah.
Stacy.
Here.
Jim.
Here.
Mike.
Here.
Jonathan. Has not made it yet. Tori. Has also not made it yet. Shannon.
I am here.
Okay, and then Jesse. Do we have a quorum? One, two, three, four, five, six. We do. We're missing three, so we should be good.
Who's the third? Oh, Jim Woodall?
No, Taya.
Oh, that's right, Taya.
Okay. First things first is approval of the minutes. The minutes were attached to the packet that Jim sent out. Does anybody have any questions about the minutes?
I do.
I have. Go ahead, Jim.
I, I, I read them twice. And they were extremely disjointed and incomplete statements and all kinds of stuff like that. And I don't know that I would approve them like that. I would just say perhaps that if I could make a suggestion that when minutes are taken, and I'm too old to take minutes. But that just simply motions and things like that are taken, but all the discussion, it seems like it, if it's going to be recorded, it's pretty difficult to decide what part of the discussion would be written down while we're taking minutes as opposed to just letting like, I think Stacy said, just let the thing be recorded and maybe just say what happened in the meeting, what were the decisions that were made rather than he said, she said kind of stuff that may not be crucial to the ultimate outcome of the meeting. Anyway, that's my thoughts.
So Jim, just for reference, everybody that's taken the minutes has tried to figure out the best way to take the minutes because it's very, when we have long meetings, it's very difficult. But if you're trying to find something within the recording, you need to have some kind of frame of reference. So that's usually why they're supposed to have a timestamp on them to say discussion was held for, you know, X number of minutes. Summary of that discussion, and if there was a motion or something that followed suit. But we've never really clearly, and Matthew didn't have any good suggestion as to how to make it easier to take the minutes, since I took the minutes all through the growth policy. I know how difficult it is to summarize. But I think with their shorter meetings, perhaps we have to set some guidelines.
So here's, here's my, I did take minutes when I first joined the board as well. In my, I was advised to follow the format of the city commission minutes, which leaves out dialogue entirely. It just, it notes a timestamp on the discussion and who had comments, not the comments, but who had comments or who commented. And then, and then who made the motion, who seconded the motion and whether it passed or not. So I will make sure to get with Jonathan because the city, the recording is the city's official minutes. So if anybody wants to go through and listen to this discussion, they can do so. But for the minute, the written minutes, that's really all we need to do is follow the city commission format, how
Jesse?
Yes.
Man, I think that what's, what needs to be added to it is just a little bit of summary of topic. So that you know, if you're trying to find something, you can go, oh, okay, they were talking about this. And if you just say Stacy spoke, Jesse spoke.
My agenda, Stacy, you essentially would take the agenda and then
I know.
Fill in under the agenda bullets. The timestamp, who made comments? And then whether the motion was made, who seconded it and moving forward. So it's not like you're just writing down, you know, who spoke, you're thought, you're utilizing the agenda as an outline. But you know what I'll do, just for clarity, I will make sure that I make that recommendation and CC the board and make sure Faith is on there so that she can concur that this is what is expected. Does that help?
That helps me.
Great, perfect. Thank you. It really does not have to have a lot of detail. And I tell any board that I sit on, you know, you can follow the agenda, but you don't have to reiterate the entire discussion or who said what or whatnot. It can be key points. You know, who made the motion, who seconded the motion and whether it passed or not. Okay, so that being said, we do have to approve the minutes or at least vote on approving the minutes.
I just have one other question for clarity. So it says here, there were no May minutes. So are you going to ask Jonathan to provide the May minutes?
Or? Did we have a meeting in May? I can't remember.
I think, I think he meant March minutes. I think there's a typo there. Or no, it was May.
No, we had no May meeting.
But we had, oh, that's right, there was no meeting. Never mind. Okay. So there was no minutes because we had no meeting.
Right. Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve the April minutes.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Misha. Let's go ahead and any more discussion on the minutes? Okay, let's go ahead and go through. Misha? For against?
For.
Stacy?
For.
Jim?
Or.
Mike?
Or.
Shannon?
For.
And I'm also for, okay, April minutes pass. Moving on to the next agenda item, we'll go ahead and start with public comment. This is general public comment for which the planning board has jurisdiction over. If you have a comment on a future agenda item, please hold it till we get to that item on the agenda. And we give everybody three minutes for a public comment here on the planning board. So if you have a comment that you'd like to make, please go ahead and either raise your hand or you can unmute. And we can hear your comment and then put your name and your physical address, please. And it looks like Patricia, you are clapping, but I'm assuming that means your hands up. Would you like to make a comment? And you're, you're still muted.
Am I unmuted now?
Yep, you sure are. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I was clapping because I'm very honored to be here. Thank you. I am, I truly am. I just wanted to bring up two items. One is
I forgot your name and address, sorry.
Sorry, it's Patricia Graybow and it's 204 East Callender Street, Livingston. Thank you. I want to bring up two items. One is I was involved in the creation $811,000 Corps of Engineers study of, of the floodplain. And in 2007. And I would like for us as a city to revisit that study. I was told that the planning department couldn't find that study. I have my own copy of it because I was a city commissioner and I was involved in that study for several months. It, it would have mitigated so much of the damage that has occurred. The recommendations of the Corps of Engineers would have mitigated so much of the damage that occurred with this flood and, and it was completely written off. I'd like us to take, I'd like us to, the, the city to take a look at this Corps of Engineers study. Number two, I'd like to bring in the principle of, of the land and the water determining so many of our decisions, the planning board decisions. I, that is something that has been not not articulated, I believe enough. For example, the city has in its strategic plan a $44 million rec center, which would tear down the civic center and put a, this rec center 25 feet from the Yellowstone River, which as you know, right now is not a good place to put something like that. I'd like us to and also an overpass coming from the north side of town where we do it on high ground, not we don't do it on, we take into consideration land and water, land and water. As we go forward in these decisions that are made by the planning board. Thank you. That, that's my three minutes, isn't it?
You've got 15 seconds. Sorry, I can't see my
Okay. Okay, those are the two, two, two items I'd like to bring up.
Perfect. Thank you, Patricia, for your comment. I don't know why I can't see my own head on the screen. Um, which is not the worst thing. Oh, there I am. Okay. Is there any more public comment? This evening. I don't see anyone with their name. Okay, second call for public comment. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. Thanks again. Let's go back to the agenda. And okay, next up, new business discussion of Park County Housing Action Plan and the recommendation to the city commission to adopt as an appendix to the city growth policy. So Jim Woodall could not join us this evening, but he did let me know that he, as far as his staff report, I guess, is that he is supportive of the city planning board to make the recommendation that the city adopt the Park County Housing Action Plan as an appendix to the city growth policy. So that's what Jim wanted me to relay to the group. But I think we have Lila on who might want to make a few comments or a presentation about the, the plan. Lila? Thanks for
Yes, thank you. Would you like a presentation? I do have slides, but I could also not if you don't have, weren't expecting that.
You know, I think it's, since Shannon said he wasn't sort of able to get some homework done, maybe it would be okay to go through your slides. And that way everybody sort of has the same information.
Great. Well, I'll just start with, thanks for having me and thanks for being here. And I'm sure as many of you are feeling really worn out this week. As Jesse mentioned, there's been a lot of uncertainty and challenges in the past couple of weeks, and I'll try to be clear and concise about where we are in the housing action plan. This is the finalized version and I'm available for questions on the process and the next steps this evening. And then also if you have questions at any other time. My name is Lila Fleishman. I'm a community development project manager with HRDC. HRDC is local community action agency serving Southwest Montana. And through HRDC, I serve as the project manager of the Park County Housing Coalition, which is that more, the entity that has developed this plan. As you might recall from the January meeting, I gave an update of where we were in the process of public engagement. So that this is more of an update from that, but I'll provide a quick refresher on some of the history as well. When that project was in the draft phase, many of you provided public comments and I thank you for taking the time for to do that and to direct other people to provide public comment. And I have a couple of slides and I'll attempt to screen share in just a second. But I just want to kind of underline that this plan is a reflection of a lengthy community process and it was developed to establish the shared vision of how to improve opportunities for people who live and work in Park County to access housing that they can afford. These tools are a framework for moving forward. And tonight you'll discuss recommending the plan for adoption as an addendum, I believe, or appendix, not sure if they're the same to the city growth policy, which is specifically called for in that document. Adopting the plan as a part of that goes a long way for providing the basis for grant applications, things like community development block grant, funding request, those kinds of things. But I would also like to highlight that the numerous members of the Park County Housing Coalition as well as HRDC intend to continue to partner with the city and the county to implement the plan. Let's see if I can screenshot. I do not have permission.
You know what? I don't know if Faith made me a co-host.
I sent, excuse me, I shared the slides with you and an email just before healthcare email if you have access to that.
Let me see.
Just in case.
Good call.
There are a Google link. I can also just kind of talk about some of those pieces if, if that's easier.
Okay, you know what, Lila, it didn't, for whatever reason, I didn't, I don't see it in my
That's fine. I kind of like being able to see people's faces while
Give us a verbal rundown. Sorry about that.
Yeah, that's no worries. The
Just a few seconds. Used it as a climate change.
Okay, great. So as you might recall from January, the Park County Housing Coalition is a group of organizations that were brought together in this form around 2020 with the Park County Community Foundation and the Park and HRDC. Really to kind of restart momentum around some conversations that had been having around, and that had been had around housing in the past. The first year of that project in 2020 really focused on bringing partners to the table and understanding the issue of housing. There was a series of webinars, community education on various aspects of the complicated web that is housing and a effort to understand the entire housing continuum. So through that series, a more dedicated subcommittee of the Housing Working Group was brought together to focus on providing community insight and details around the development of the housing action plan. And HRDC facilitated this process with this housing working group. I would like to highlight a couple of the members of that group, I think I'll get to that part in a minute, that worked with the city, particularly Matthew Menard was really helpful in creating that. So not with us this evening, but had expressed interest in kind of continuing with that process. We'll just mention that he was in the working group and representing the city through that piece of the process. And in addition to the group coming together to develop the plan for the housing action plan in 2020, 2021, we released the Housing Needs Assessment, and that is a lengthy document that I believe I touched on some of the details the last time that really focuses in on where in, along the housing continuum are the most acute challenges, what those income thresholds are around households that can access renting, households seeking for homeownership, as well as a more in-depth review of what the existing conditions are of where housing is in the county, the conditions, the regulatory environment, what opportunities exist or don't exist around the state level, what resources have been used and might be used in the future. So that's also on parkcountyhousing.com on the website for the Housing Coalition. And then this year, we concluded the public outreach phase around the housing action plan of that draft and finalized the draft. Getting on this agenda has taken a little while, so we've continued working through the subcommittee model and launched had the first meeting of two out of the three subcommittees that will be working on some of these priority areas highlighted in the housing action plan. Moving forward, the Housing Coalition hopes to be a sustainable organization that is able to continue tracking and monitoring the progress of the housing action plan and community housing broadly. The growth policy of the City of Livingston specifically supports having a more detailed public process around developing the housing action plan. So I just wanted to, to reiterate that part as well as the county growth policy and will be seeking adoption with both the county and the city looks for non-governmental organizations to help fill in some of those pieces of capacity and bring in additional expertise around the specific subjects. So that's where we nest into that. The Housing Working Group did meet a number of times to draft this as well as the public outreach, which I have a couple of slides about, but are a little bit visual. So those are available in the plan. You can see that history likely in your, already shared with you in preparation for this email. But if you want to share it with anyone else, it's parkcountyhousing.com. And then within that plan, we really looked at how to leverage the resources through local housing solutions.org was a lot of the tools and the lens that we took to develop a local housing solution selection of tools that were going to address the variety of, of challenges in the housing continuum. Things that would help work with partners that provide resources for people experiencing homelessness all the way to homeownership opportunities as well as tools that reduce the barriers to building, building homes, help people access housing in the market, preservation, increasing the supply of homes available, increasing the quality of homes available. And also what is legal and on the table in Montana. That was another consideration that if you've compared this plan to various other plans, there might be a couple of things that we did not recommend. And there is a section that talks about some of the tools that were not prioritized. Many of them were not prioritized. We started the conversation with through the legislative session, inclusionary zoning was taken off of the table. So that one is no longer part of that conversation. But the tools are listed in the order that they were ranked top priority by the Housing Working Group. There are 12 tools and then within the plan, there is a detailed section of each of those of why it was prioritized, what the intention is for that tool. The framework of these tools specifically for each of them needs a lot of the specifics flushed out. There is a variety of stakeholders that have the ability or willingness to implement some of the tools as well. So there are specific tools that are well suited and only possible for, say, the incorporated, only incorporated community and part large incorporated community in Park County is the City of Livingston. So there's definitely some recommendations where we hope that the city can move forward some of those pieces while there's also spaces for community organizations and the Park County Housing Coalition to continue working in some of those subgroups. There are a couple of summary documents looking to kind of explain visually where the tools line up with different income ranges and resources out there in addition to where households within the county lineup as well as graphics looking at who those partners and implementers may be going forward. As I mentioned, we've already had the opportunity to launch the first two subcommittees looking at those priority areas as well as setting a date for the third. Those subcommittees will be working on developing a community fund, a community investment fund, which is really going to provide the teeth to be able to bring a lot of these projects forward. Many of the tools do have some sort of funding source already associated with them in some capacity. For instance, the low income housing tax credit. There are some existing infrastructure around the down payment assistance program. Those kinds of tools, but to be able to really expand and scale there. Most of them have some sort of gap, particularly in the current environment that we're looking to work in, the cost of land, the cost of construction. Even, even projects that would have had, needed a lesser ask are going to need a larger ask to be brought to the community at the current conditions. So the community investment fund group is really working to look at different examples that exist around the country as well as locally and some work that HRDC is working with Gallatin County on piloting some of that in the region. And that would most likely work with Neighbor Works, Montana. Some of you, at least one of you was able to join some of those meetings. So I won't go into too much detail about what the subcommittees are just getting started on, but if you're interested in participating or learning more, happy to answer any questions on that. The other subcommittee is focused on kind of preparing to make the asks and get projects built around workforce housing. That came up a number of times through this entire process where there are challenges across the entire housing continuum. Some of the most pressing and acute challenges that there is the ability for the community to rally behind is in workforce housing. So the workforce, large employers are not likely going to be brought to the table or have the appropriate ways to plug in on something like senior and disability housing. So this group is really focused on doing, doing one aspect of the plan from one perspective as opposed to implementing the entire plan. And there's a variety of ways that that group could work. We met the first time, we intend to define our scope and work plan for the next year. In the second meeting, we'll likely do a survey to employees and employers of those needs and then look at how to either build new construction programs to meet, need at a faster pace than new construction or preservation and ways to, to connect local workers with housing opportunities. The final group is the smallest and may just be a couple of volunteers that are going to be assisting with the data tracking and metrics and storytelling about what does it mean for our community when we have options for local residents to have housing that is affordable and safe and they're able to meet their needs and grow in the community. So that's mostly what I have. And if you've had a chance to review the documents or not totally understandable with this week, available for questions. Thank you.
Lila, thank you so much. And just thank you so much for you and your organization, HRDC, and your colleagues, Tracy and Brian, the fact that we have such experts in the field helping our community out is, we're just very lucky. So thank you so much for showing up at all of these meetings and informing us and, and leading the charge for, for these work groups. I did get to attend both. They're well-run. Second, the workforce housing was very well attended. The other one was, was well-attended as well, just not as popular as the workforce housing one, but I just really can't say enough how much I appreciate your efforts. It's thank, thank goodness you're here because we certainly need it. Okay, I'm going to pause there. Does the board have any questions for Lila about her presentation or the, the attachment that was in the board packet?
I'm sure.
Yes, Jim?
I don't have any questions. I read the, read the document. And I, I just want to echo what you said. I am very impressed with the level of professionalism. The thoroughness of the document is just the, I am just, I'm basically, I'm blown away. So I'm very grateful as well that we have the opportunity to have people like Lila in this, in our community. So thank you very much.
I have one question. When you said one of the groups was doing funding to get things off the ground, could you give an example of what that, how that pertains to one of your 12 or just, just a little summary?
Yeah, so there's a couple of different ways that that group could decide to go forward and they're not mutually exclusive. We could have all of them move forward. I'll start with the third one, which I think is going to take a little while if that is a strategy that the community wants to move forward with, which would be a mill levy. Pretty much all of the polling and community conversations are that that wouldn't be particularly popular at the moment, so that's not the priority of the group. The other one that is is an option that's on the table, but isn't, would meet, it would meet some of the need, not the entire need. And is something that cannot be done for the community, but helping to connect and support resources for developing a cooperative. And that would be more of kind of like the social impact investment strategy, so say a couple of large employers wanted to get together and build some rental apartments. And meet the community need that way or individuals, there is capacity within the state from the Montana. Cooperative Development Center to help facilitate that technical assistance, so we just like to bring it up as an opportunity for all of the communities in Montana. The third option that I think includes the most options and potential future sources of funding. If there were to be a mill levy could be included is to work with a community development. Financial institution, a CDFI, and to have a fund that is targeted at. The range of things within the plan, it would likely kind of have specific targets for different income ranges. Projects that meet the needs of different income ranges and be able to leverage a lot of existing funding sources. Have some of that be grants, some of that be more of a revolving loan fund and that would also help be able to blend. The resources of the local banking industry with the Community Reinvestment Act credits which are required, so if we develop a. Fund that is a lot that can blend all of those things together and then work with the community to set those targets of the kinds of projects that it could either. Provide grants, loans or help leverage additional dollars, it could do things like fill in some of the gaps. That make a low income housing tax credit project possible or provide the funding needed to make a really vital. Preservation of homes that are currently affordable that may be lost, given changing circumstances. It could provide that gap and then could figure out financing and return the money to that that pot. It provides a lot of flexibility of where you'd want to go, it could support new programs, could support down payment assistance. Could make no interest or low interest loans for community members to build accessory dwelling units, potentially add some. Income rental restrictions or occupancy requirements with that funding, it could help expand community land trust. Most of the tools recommended could use a little bit of a boost in some way, even if they have funding associated. So it would really be able to expand the variety of 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 homes.
And is your, is your position funded solely by HRDC? As Chair of this or Director or whatever your your actual title is?
Long term, we do kind of hope and envision that the Housing Coalition can become a freestanding organization. HRDC has precedence in that capacity building in Big Sky, we worked with the Big Sky Community Housing Trust through that process. There are many differences and I hear Tracy, our Associate Director and 20 years experience in community development in the region. Mentioned many times that she wouldn't trade Big Sky's problems for. The for the money of their resort tax, but they do have a little bit, they they have a number of differences of how things kind of move forward. So it's not an exact template, but we do intend to kind of move forward and make sure that the work. The work is supported in a way that's going to benefit the the community most effectively, so we're still figuring out what exactly that would look like. We've put in. About two years so far and are moving forward with the third year of getting the subcommittees. Functioning, so it may be that HRDC hires somebody in Livingston that is able to kind of continue in that role. Or we may continue working with the Coalition until we're able to identify that local leader going forward. The funding comes from grants as well as HRDC's general staff funding. So we are mostly supported in this role right now by AMB West Philanthropies, gave us $30,000. They also have provided some technical assistance from Jeffrey LaBelle, through this process you'll see in the plan that he also. Was one of the thought leaders in creating that local housing solutions framework and resources, so having his technical assistance was really phenomenal. For that, we did. Did not receive funding from the Community Foundation, but they were a co-recipient when they were helping in the earlier phase around those convenings. And then the City of Livingston did contribute funding of the COVID response in 20. 20, I believe.
Yeah, thank you, thanks.
Anybody from the board have any more questions for Lila before I open it up to public comment? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and open this agenda item up for public comments. So please make sure you state your name and your address, we give public comment three minutes. And I'm happy to set the clock and pop it up there so you can see where you're at and I'll go ahead and open it up to public comment on this agenda item. Is there anyone who'd like to make a comment? Yes, Patricia.
Am I on unmute right now or am I muted?
Nope, you're on, you are unmuted, I can hear you.
Okay, good, Patricia Gray, 0204 East Callander Street, Livingston. I like Jim Barrett, I I think this is a remarkable document, so my comments, please don't. View my comments as anything but supportive of this document, however. I think in order to move forward with this, I don't think that this is the time tonight to to approve this. Because the city has never used economic health for Livingston as part of their strategic plan. And I think that would would correlate very well with eventually approving this document. It brings the business community and it 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 has all kinds of implications, so that I I would suggest that. Secondly, I really don't think that this committee should move forward tonight with this because until. There is a really thorough investigation, which I called for a month ago of what is happening at the Sherwood Apartments. There is an outs, there is a possibility that HRDC may be faced with a class action lawsuit. On the conditions of the people as they renovate the Sherwood Apartments and it, it would, this isn't a good time. For uh until we get an investigation of what's happening there, this is not a good time to bring this forward, I would think. I would think, you know, several months down the road, when when the air is cleared on that, it would be a better time. I I yield.
Okay, thank you Patricia, are there any other members of the public who would like to make a comment? Okay, last call for public comment. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment, thanks very much. Okay, board discussion on this agenda item, would anyone like to start?
Well, Madam Chair, I could say something.
Great, Jim.
I I appreciate what Patricia had to say. But my feeling is that we are way late. And as far as getting, getting into this issue, so for me, it's very timely that we. Move forward as rapidly as possible to try to mitigate the issues that we're facing in the communities, so. That's my feeling on the matter.
Okay, thanks Jim, anybody else want to make a comment or bring up something for discussion on this agenda item?
Just have a question. It's more of a procedural one, so if this gets approved, it just becomes an addendum or a reference. Document to the growth policy, is that correct? Is that what the procedure is?
We are, it, we will be voting on whether to make a recommendation to the city commission. To adopt it as an appendix to the growth policy, so similar to the Active Transportation Coalition, Active Transportation Plan. I think that was the title of it, which we recommended, I believe we did the same thing and that, correct me if I'm wrong. I believe we made that recommendation also to the city commission to adopt that as an appendix to our growth policy. So this is following the same line and my understanding is the rationale for this and Lila mentioned this in her. Presentation is when it comes to applying for certain funding streams, it's important to show that our city. Has gone through a public process and discussed, you know, these initiatives. And it has the weight of the the citizenry behind it, I guess, so we are acting as an advisory board. To the city commission and so we are sort of giving the public that platform to discuss. You know, the the items on our agenda and how we want to move and grow as a city. And so by making this recommendation to the city commission to add it to as an appendix to our growth policy, it just means that we are, we are in better shape. When it comes to applying for funding as a city or as a community. For for these initiatives and housing, plus it backs up, like Lila said, we have the chapter on housing in our growth policy. And it sort of strengthens those statements that we've made in that document, sorry dogs.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, may I comment? So as an employee of one of the largest employers in the area. And knowing that we currently in Public Works are five full-time staff members short. And six seasonal short. And living through the challenges the last two years of of trying to attract and retain. Quality employees, I I overwhelmingly support this plan. And I agree with Jim, I think it's overdue and I. Respectfully disagree with Patricia on holding this off, I I'd like to. Put my vote into support to have this be an appendix to the growth policy and just really want to thank Lila. And all the volunteers and community effort that went into putting this document. Again, I, I I use planning documents all the time, I know they're living documents. If there's more information that comes in the future, we certainly have it under our purview to. Add addendums or add information to this document, it is a living document, but we need to start somewhere and that time is now, I yield.
Thank you Shannon. Anyone else from the board, Mike, Misha? Either one of you have any comments that you'd like to share? Nope, nope, okay, all right, well. Planning Board? We are tasked with one thing and that is making a motion to the city commission or making a motion on this agenda item.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that the planning board approves this plan. And provide a recommendation to the city commission to include this as an appendix to the growth policy.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Nope, Jim beat you to it, okay, any more discussion before we vote? Okay, let's go ahead, Misha.
I approve, agree, whatever we're saying tonight.
Okay, you approve, I agree, perfect, Stacy? Jim?
Yes.
Mike?
I'm for it.
Okay, Shannon?
Yes.
Okay, and I am also for it, so the motion passes to make the recommendation to the city commission to add this. Plan to as an appendix to the growth policy. Thank you very much, Lila, again for your presentation, feel free to stick around or if you're ready to go have dinner or do something fun with your evening, I get it. Time, you got it, have a great day, we'll see.
Thank you, Lila.
Okay, well done, let's see, what's next on our item, okay, so we're back down to old business. And the first, first up here is Public Works update, Shannon, do you have a? Do you have an update for us on what's going on with Public Works?
Well, I can spell it out, it's F L O O D. And mitigation associated with that has been the focus this week, but no. While I don't have a formal presentation or or put any thought in this, I have a lot on my mind. We'll we'll stick with the housing project since we just approved the Housing Action Plan. We have Dan Call and his investment group have purchased the Diamond K property on Montana Street and. That parcel is going in front of the zoning commission this month to look at R3 zoning. The 10 acres that was just recently annexed into the city on Rogers Lane is in front of the zoning commission this month as well. So once the commission provides a recommendation to the city commission and they approve or disapprove. That zoning recommendation, we will move forward with two housing projects on those two properties. We continue to work with Doug Bram on the next hotel project across the street there at Rogers. City projects, our Sixth and Seventh Street project is going well, we made the connection into Geyser Street yesterday on Sixth Street. And are preparing to start work on Seventh Street next week. The Civic Center Sewer Project, the contract was approved by the city commission here a couple of weeks ago. We were working with the school district and all the user groups in the Miles Banshell Sack Park area and. Barring a river receding by that time, hoping to get started with that project the week after Fourth of July. We are continuing to work with the North Town Development and I would expect that their application might be the next one. We see as a group, as well as the PFL subdivision application. For the area around FedEx. That hits a lot of the, I know I'm forgetting a lot, but I I'm certainly open to answer any questions on anything else. Any board members would like to ask?
I have one question, so you said on the the hotel, is that the one next to the Fairfield or is that a different place?
Yes, it is next to the Fairfield.
Next to the Fairfield and. When you said that we were, you've been working with North Town, so that. I don't know how many people are familiar with the North Town's website, but maybe share their website so. That we can kind of become familiar with, how much land is really involved in that whole area? Or how many months down the road do you think it will be before we hear from North Town?
I I could, I mean, Jim would have that answer better than I, but I I mean, I could see us having a discussion. On our agenda in July. For both North Town and potentially PFL.
So. Given that the city commission did not approve the Discovery Vista. So have you had to have different kinds of conversations with North Town? As they're reviewing things or where does, how does that work, how does that kind of fit in there?
Well, North Town, North Town was watching the meeting on Discovery Vista, so they. And they were, they they looked at the minutes from the planning board and we've had discussions with them that pertain to the discussions. On the planning board and the commission. and we've had discussions with them that pertain to the discussions on the Planning Board and the commission. So they're, they're fully aware of, of, of the discussions and the decisions that have been made in the last couple of months.
Okay. That's why I just wanted to know if they were sort of in the overall looping picture. So you know what they were.
Stacy, we talked, I mean, the, the amount of conversations between developers at the planning level, the building department and Public Works, it's, it's consistent on all these projects.
Okay, good.
But if anybody does want to look at, at the website, I think it's, it's very interesting. From North, what is it? North Town? Livingston.com or something like that. You can Google it.
Shannon, I had a quick question about that. Or just about the, the process. So I'm assuming Discovery Vista is sort of reworking their subdivision and are going to, would they bring that back to us?
If, yes, if they're going to go through the subdivision process, they have an opportunity to develop that property similar to the Tri-Tip project. If they are meeting the zoning and the process spelled out in our site plan review.
And the Tri-Tip is the 20 condo units right there on the corner of Ninth? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay.
So is that, is that something that, that avenue, is that something that has become a loophole? Or is that something that was, I guess, I don't know the history of why that was created so that you could, you could put condos or duplexes or whatever without having to go through any kind of subdivision? Do you have the history on that?
So Stacy, I'm the Public Works Director. Those are questions that Jim needs to answer.
Jim, okay, sorry about that, Shannon.
I, I could, no, and that's fine. I ju, but I can just tell you that the site plan review that we generated with Matthew is a significant step forward in providing developers a checklist of all of the city's requirements and the middle requirements and development requirements. And it really all starts with the zoning of, of how each parcel is zoned.
Okay, just for you guys, so you know, I put that link in the chat and you can go right onto their website. And I think you can see which home sites reserved looks like probably that next phase. I think, I don't know. Anyway, you can take a look at it. I put it in the chat. I'm going to need five more minutes. Not right now. No, sorry. Okay, does anybody else have any other questions for? Like I've been on Zoom for so long, my kids like don't even know who I am anymore. So anyway, um, any more questions for Shannon on his Public Works report? Okay.
Thank you, Shannon, for all of your hard work, though.
Hey.
We all appreciate it.
It, it takes a team and we have an excellent team of staff and the volunteer effort in our community right now is second to none. It's just, I, it's really amazing, the amount of people out there that are willing to step up and help out. So it takes a village and, and I'm very proud to be part of that.
You're here. We are very fortunate. Okay, I do not believe we are going to be able to receive a planning update because we don't have Jim on today. So we're going to move into sort of final board comments. Are there any final board comments that any board members would like to make? Go ahead, Misha. Oh, you have to unmute.
I am going to be out of town for the next meeting. So if there's a remote or a Zoom option, that'd be great.
Okay, perfect. I'm not really quite sure. I, I had actually assumed tonight we would be in person with the Zoom option for the public, but, but that's not the case. So I will, I guess I'll know from faith, you know, in the next couple of weeks, whether the July meeting will be Zoom or not. But I assume there will be a Zoom option because the public will participate via Zoom or that option should be made available. But don't quote me on that. I'm just under that assumption. But thank you for letting us know. Anybody else?
Just, I guess, because of all the upheaval, kind of to make sure that we, we continue to stay connected, you know, because of everybody being overloaded. So we all try to plan our lives too and it's busy summer. So just to, just to keep that in mind and make sure that we're all notified at least two weeks before or whatever. Whether it's Faith or Jim or whomever.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Um, and things seem to be changing. There was, when I took over as Chair the first year, all communications were to go through Matthew at that time. So I wasn't given anybody's email and, and I was not to email directly with any, with a board from myself. It was supposed to come all through city staff. However, that must be changing because I've been asked now to sort of update you guys on whatever, this meeting today. And so, so I'll just sort of get a clearer picture on, on the expectations that are on me as your chair moving forward. And I think with just the, you know, the turnover and the changes and staffing and whatnot of the city, I think we can give the city some grace on, on some of this. However, we will, I'll do my best to try and keep, keep the board in the loop to the best of my ability moving forward. And, and I also want to say with that, and Shannon, please don't think that this is an expectation that I, that I'm asking of any, you know, in the immediate future. But there was a request at our last meeting in May when we did have the subdivision approval process to have an idea of lots that maybe are not, there aren't proposals put in yet, but, but ideas of where, where developers are interested in developing, you know, maybe a map of, of where we may expect other developments to happen. Correct me if I'm wrong, is that something that we were sort of asking for?
Well, Madam Chair, I, you know, I brought that up in the discussion for the Discovery Vista. And so I, I obviously didn't have time to prepare for that. And it would actually be really great if we do have a quorum and an in-person meeting where we could actually pull up the city zoning map and look at all these vacant parcels and, and just go over them in person based on what Jim and I know.
Right, that's what it was. Thank you. Thanks for jogging my memory. So, you know, oh, go ahead, Stacy.
Well, I was just going to add to that, that one of my longtime requests is to have on that same kind of map, the names of the different subdivisions so that when they're referenced, if it could just be at the same, on the same map in general or something, all in one.
Yeah. So maybe, you know, we, we can think about that for our, our August meeting. It sounds like we might be doing another subdivision review in July. But maybe Shannon just could put a pin on that, in that. And, and I can ask that of Jim to get an email and just maybe get it back on his radar as well.
Absolutely. We, Jim and I've talked about it. I just, I, we're overwhelmed right now and we just really appreciate everybody's patience and understanding as we navigate through a really challenging time. So I, that's all I ask.
Yep, no problem. Completely understandable. Um, okay, any other board comments? Okay, our next meeting is scheduled for July 20th, 2022. I will communicate with city staff to find out, you know, when we will be meeting in person and, and what the virtual option would be. Other than that, I just thank you all very much for your time, for your efforts, for your volunteerism on the city planning board and for the public and their comments and for the presentation we had this evening. So it is 6:32 and I'm going to stop the recording and end our meeting. Thank you guys very much and have a really great month.
Next month.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.